Susan, how's it going?
And how are you?
Oh, not too bad. I'm just trying to figure out, make sure I turn on the closed captioning.
Yep. What are you doing here?
No. Theo, how are you feeling?
Yeah, I'm eighty percent, ninety-five percent.
Oh, well.
Sort of all about. You hit the wall at a certain point, you just go right down.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's the dog who's really suffering. It's the dog. He can't get the distance he needs. So. Yeah. So there, there's the show captions, right?
There we go. I think we got it.
Perfect. I like how Susan only gives you five minutes to figure it out, too. How's everybody else? Dealing with our last gasp of winter. Not much, thankfully.
I'm doing fine, no problem with me. Of course, I have a huge commute. I mean, actually go to work, but it's not very far.
We got the stay-at-home, don't come in. So that was, that was all right.
Anybody that lived west of the city didn't bother going in today, which was fine.
Hi, everyone.
Aaron.
Hello.
So Theo's not feeling too hot today, so I'm stepping in to be the host for the meeting. So I'm going to give it about another minute or so for Megan to join. If she doesn't, then we'll get started without her.
Hey there, Maya.
So it's, it's one past seven. I'm going to call this meeting of the Wakefield Planning Board to order. Start with a roll call. Theo, no.
Here.
Matt Lowry.
Yeah.
Bill Spalding.
Here.
And Megan Minasali, perfect timing.
Here.
So, consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions to the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and/or listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial-in number. Three oh one, seven one five, eight five nine two, meeting ID, eight six oh, one two four seven, one oh four two, with a pass code of oh five, oh six, three oh. Please only use dial-in or computer and not both, as audio feedback may distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, the location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and/or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town disability coordinator, William Reno, town engineer, at seven eight one, two four six, six three oh eight, as far in advance of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove any accessibility barrier for you. So with that ordered, I'm going to move on to item number two, which is approval of the meeting minutes from our February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Have members of the planning board had a chance to review? And does anyone have any comment?
I have no comments in the motion to approve the February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, moving on to a roll call vote. Theo, no.
Yes.
Megan Minasali.
Yes.
Bill Spalding.
Yes.
And Matt Lowry.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, and the motion passes five to zero. Uh, moving on to item number three, proposed street name change bylaw. So we're having a public forum associated with the street name bylaw change. Bill, do you want to take this one?
I can. I did review the revisions that were given to us from the bylaw review committee. Specifically, Dan Lieber, Theo, thanks for distributing those. I know we looked at these in a previous meeting. I want to say it was the first meeting in January. Does that, that sound right?
That does sound correct.
Yeah, I was looking back at my notes to see, and I believe it was. Yeah, the I think we reviewed them. Did we just talk about them? Anyway, we have them. And I was wondering, what's the, how do we want to go about this, since we do not have any members of the public that I see, unless they're not?
Yeah, I believe that the intent for today was to provide a public forum for the ability of the public to provide feedback as it relates to these proposed changes. So seeing as there's no other, unless V de Checa is someone who's looking to provide feedback related to this bylaw, I'm.
Well, yeah, because time-wise, I don't want to take up the board's time to review something we've already reviewed. I know there really aren't any changes when we reviewed it last time. So street name change bylaw, I could share my screen if that helps.
Yeah, I would ask, I would ask to do so. And then the only other thing is if there's no other comment from the public, I think the only other matter for us is to formally vote to refer this matter to town council for inclusion in the warrant on the town meeting.
Yes. I agree. And if you give me the power to share, I will. Thank you. So if you all can see, let me move some stuff around. So it's just what's highlighted in red are the additions or revisions that the bylaw review committee, is it a committee or a board, a committee created for us to review and then to pass on. So if anyone is familiar with what we presented as a board back in the fall, the changes are in red. And in a previous meeting, our board, the members of our board were fine with the revisions and changes. Just want to make a note that sitting on this general bylaw review committee is also Town Mullen, Town Council, Tom Mullen, Town Council. So we have that type of background, too. And is Dan Lieber on this evening?
It does not appear as if he is.
Okay, all right. So I'll quickly go through it. So the, the goal for this, the street names and numbers, that's going to be the name of the proposed bylaw. And under section one seventy-five dash eleven, it just goes through, and what didn't exist before was a process for this to happen. If a street name, the desire to name, to rename a street. So the information in here goes through the process. So who's eligible, what's, what streets are eligible, and the application process. So most of the changing, the revisions happened here in this application process, taking away the filing fee. The why. Let's see. Yeah, so a lot of that was removed to a cleaner. Can see. Taken out. So filing fee of eight hundred, so it was changed to, well, it says a minimum filing fee of eight hundred. Public hearing. Sixty days, so list of the abutters business. Going through the process. This was wording that we went back and forth with a lot of times on our board, and how multifamily properties and how that would work. So if the actual cost of notice exceeds, I actually like this one, this change to this addition. If the actual cost or of notice exceeds, the fee previously paid, the town clerk shall demand payment. And that's something that we didn't really address, because we didn't really know how much it was going to cost. So it's, it's a really good one to add in there, because if it does go beyond, what if the street with, we figured it more than five or six houses, it could be more work for town clerk. Under the action by town council, how that would go back and forth between the planning board and how it would be sent to the town clerk and then to town council. So looking at this, added to the end of it, and you could see any street name change approved by town council shall become effective on a date to be set by the town council. So really, from us, it goes to town council, and then we don't really review it again. And another section that we didn't have at all was appeal rights. So it's good to see that in there. And just the process. I don't know where the number came from, twenty-five inhabitants of the town. It's the first time I think I've seen the word inhabitants, too. So that's, that's pretty much it. So as a board, I mean, we're presenting this to the public.
Yeah, so one, one thing before we pivot to that. I do want to, just for, just to remind members of the council or the planning board, as well as any members of the public who may be on, reviewing this at a later date. My understanding is that the reason why, the impetus for this change was a, there was a request for a street name change, but then the town realized there was no process laid out. We were tasked with developing a process to to implement, not knowing the, the majority of the members of the board have no understanding of what that request was, or if it is still in effect. So we crafted this independent of any influence associated with a specific ask. The reason for, for a change to request is laid out that, you know, basically, there's certain restrictions as it relates to timelines, you have to wait for renaming a previously named street, et cetera, et cetera. And then as it relates to the, the town financial, financials, there's a language in here related to the town being reimbursed for the cost of any street name change, as well as recall some notification to anyone who lives on the said street that may or may not be, have their name changed as part of this process. So with that, with all that being said, is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on, on this before we vote to refer to town council and for, for inclusion in the warrant for a town meeting?
Were we going to have more than one meeting for this, public-wise, or is this it?
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Theo, but I believe that we were, the intent was to have this, this meeting and then refer to town council for them to refer to the.
Yeah, that, that was the goal, just from a timing perspective, it's safer to, to be ahead on the, on the schedule if we certainly can talk about it next on the twenty-eighth. The, but we were, I, we were certainly worried about the us overlapping with town council.
Right. Okay. If that's the case, do, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we recommend. I'm not sure, what are the, what's the formal language that we make this, that we send this to town council for? We send this proposed street name change bylaw to town council for review and approval for the, the May town warrant.
I think that has everything, unless we want to add in there the revised, but we haven't, to my knowledge, we haven't sent anything to town council yet, correct?
Correct.
This has only gone to the bylaw review committee.
Right.
Okay, so, right, so there's no reason to add in the word revision or revisions in there.
So do I, so we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
I will, I will second it.
Okay, in that case, roll call vote on the motion forwarded by Theo and seconded by Megan. Looks like we lost Matt. So Bill Spalding?
Yes.
Megan Minasali?
Yes.
Theo, no?
Yes.
And I, Jim Hogan, I'm a yes. So the motion passes four to zero. Thank you all for the, for the work on this, and looking forward to seeing it on the warrant and hopefully a conclusion to this, this effort. Want to shout out Bill Spalding for all the efforts, putting this together and, and the patience and having it get to the five-yard line, and then the rug pulled out from underneath us and this extra delay. But I do think that the, the bylaw review committee did add some, some good content and some good revisions to it. So I'm glad it looks like it's in good shape, and it wasn't a waste of time.
Thanks, and I, I do appreciate the time the, the bylaw review committee has spent on it, because it is a better product, and hopefully at town meeting, it will go through and be voted on. I believe at town meeting, it needs to have, it's a bylaw change, so it needs two-thirds vote. So Matt's back, okay.
Actually, I actually believe that it, because it's not related to zoning, it's a simple majority.
A general bylaw. I know that came up in our meeting when we discussed it before, but I, I don't think we had a definite on that, which either way, if it's a majority or two-thirds.
Yeah, honestly, that, like, other people can figure that out, and, and we'll, we'll go, we'll see how it goes from there. So.
So, last thing, Jim, just to add to it, one of us, probably me, if the chair allows, I'll be standing up at town meeting. Reviewing and sharing this, or however, I mean, because it's a bylaw that's come from us, I believe we will read it on the floor to go through.
And we will recommend it for favorable action as well.
Right, well, I, I don't know if we just get up there and say, planning board recommends favorable action, or we actually get up there and read this. Matt, do you have any recollection? When there's a bylaw that comes directly from the planning board, I think we're the representatives that get up there and read it.
Um, I don't think we've, haven't come directly from the planning board before, so I'm not positive on that.
Okay.
I, I mean, I would think, I would think logically, we would be the ones who would go up, present it, and then comma, recommend favorable action. So, okay, I, I, you know, I ultimately defer to Theo, since he's the actual chair, but I would advocate to have Bill be the representative, since he's put in the work on this specific, specific item.
No, I certainly agree. So that would be terrific.
Thanks, right.
I would maybe check with Tom Mullen to see what the actual procedure is, if we should be reading it, or and recommending it, or how that goes. But I think that's the logical way to do it.
Okay.
Okay, anything else as it relates to the proposed street name bylaw change? Okay, hearing nothing. I'll move over to item number four, the MBTA communities update. So I'll take this one, since there's been some, some quality movement in the past couple of weeks. So we have a working group fully defined. So the working group is going to consist of Julie Smith Galvin, member of town council, myself, Matt Lowry, and both of us representing the planning board. Greg McIntosh from the Zoning Board of Appeals, Robin Greenberg from the Environmental Sustainability Committee, Aaron, our, our fearless staff member, economic and community and development, and Matt Brown, who's a Wakefield town resident, who's not affiliated with any specific board or appointed position. So the seven of us are going to be meeting starting in April, and we have a process that we're getting ready to kick off. We're envisioning that process is going to conclude sometime in August, based on the progress of the working group, which we will continually provide updates to this, to this board. As it relates to our progress, and then hopefully sometime in August, we'll have an initial proposed MBTA overlay district that will be in conformance with the section three A law passed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts related to the underlying zoning. So very excited, very exciting news, some bunch of information, kickoff information went out today to the members of the working group, as well as contact information. So looking forward to it, and thank you, Matt, for volunteering, and thank you, Bill and Theo, for graciously volunteering and then deferring.
I, I do have one question. The, the two meetings a month and the agenda, how did that get put together?
So the two meetings, the two meetings came about based on conversations that myself, Aaron, and a consultant that we've hired as the town, their grant, Ezra Glenn, who's done some work with the ZBBA. The three of us kind of tried to come up with a, a cadence that seemed to make sense, that would keep positive momentum, while also not being so far apart that you would lose, lose the thread. That seemed to be the balance that we thought would be most likely successful. However, as the working group gets into, into the work, if, if the seven of us think that that's not appropriate, then obviously we can revise that. When we set up how we wanted the process to work, we tried to think about what would make sense as it relates to what was a meaningful or reasonable amount of work you could get through in one chunk. There was some alternate options that we thought about, where would you just take like a Saturday and try to do an eight-hour marathon session, which everyone seemed to think was likely resulting in a lot of disengagement? As well as we tried to build in a couple of locations where there's some feedback loops from town staff as it relates to some of the tasks they can do, once we set the overall clear agenda, or clear direction, or clear vision of what the district is going to look like.
I think also, we just want to be mindful, too, of our contract with the consultant. It's only for a certain period of time, and it doesn't mean that we can't continue the work after, but trying to take advantage of his expertise as much as we can with what that, what his timeframe looks like, too.
Okay, it just to me, it seems almost like a lot of meetings for this, but perhaps.
And that could, yeah, that could change. I mean, after our first meeting, and then our second meeting, kind of seeing where people stand and, and the work that, and Jim, I don't mean to speak for you, but I think that definitely is adaptable based on kind of how the first meeting and second meeting go.
Yeah, I, I would echo that. You know, I think we tried to come up with something as the baseline, and if we need to adjust based on how the progress goes, and again, obviously, Matt will have more, more line of sight on it than the rest of the board, but Matt, myself, and Aaron will make sure everyone else is appraised of our progress as we get through the, the balance of it. Uh, any other questions as it relates to MBTA communities? Okay, so in that case, I'm going to move on to item number five, which is the upcoming March twenty twenty, March twenty, twenty twenty-three bylaw review committee meeting. So as folks may remember, Dan Lieber presented at our meeting last time and indicated that this is going to be a kickoff for the bylaw review committee, where the bylaw review committee is going to be reviewing and and editing or recommissioning our zoning. So they've requested presence from the planning board, as well as other relevant boards associated with ZBBA, for example. So I think from my recollection, a number of the members of the planning board indicated a willingness and an eagerness to be part of that conversation. So just double checking as it relates to people who are planning on attending that meeting. I, I believe Bill, Matt, and I believe the two of you indicated that you were planning on attending potentially.
Yes, I'd like to attend.
And then Megan and Theo, I, I don't recall, did either one of you indicate you an interest or willingness to attend that meeting as well?
I'm unable to attend.
I mean, I'm certainly interested that, you know, it does get into the, I mean, we're just attending, so we're, we're not, it doesn't have to be a formal planning board meeting, right, since we're not.
Yeah, so I, I was also planning on attending, so if we have four of the five, we'll have a quorum. So I believe that means that we have to post it, even if we are not formally meeting. Susan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's technically what we have to do.
Yeah, I know with the master plan meetings I've heard, too, in the past, like, if you guys all attended, as long as you're attending as a resident, but I feel like they're going to want input from you guys as the planning board. So I think to rather be safe and sorry, I would post it. That's my input.
And I feel more comfortable with that as well.
Okay.
Sorry. Correct me if I'm wrong. We posted, does that mean that we have to, like, as part of the meeting, say, we're convening a, meaning of the planning board, you know, defer to the, or do we don't have to do that, Susan? Okay, we don't have to formally open a meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, right, that, that's what I was going to ask. So we're, we're just posting that we are attending.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if we're a joint meeting, then we would have to actually open it up like we do with a joint meeting with the town council, if we elect someone or appoint someone, but otherwise we're just notifying that there'll be members there, potentially acting on behalf of the board.
Okay, so in that case, I think we're all in agreement. We'll post it, just be safe and sorry. Regardless, we have enough members who have indicated an interest in attending that would likely a quorum with Matt.
Right. If I could just add, too, I'm looking at their agenda right now for Monday, the twentieth, it's at seven PM, Zoom, and item number five is introduction with attorney Mark Babrowski. So that's the consultant, I believe, that will be taken, reviewing and. So that's the consultant, I believe, that will be take, um, reviewing and reorganizing and helping with it, so. I mean, that's part of me wanting to be there is to meet the consultant and understand more about the process.
Absolutely, um, anything else that we want to bring up as a board, uh, prior to that, to that meeting, or?
Uh, maybe we should have a plan, um, for how we want to attend future meetings, I don't know. Do we, are we looking at this as something that, um, a planning board member should be attending? Should it be required? Should we? Create a liaison for it, I don't know, I just want to bring it up, I feel. We'll have a better idea after this meeting on Monday evening, but just a thought, if. If it's something we want to keep a close eye on, meaning as a planning board, do we want to have input? Um, or do we just want to gain the knowledge of what they're doing, so in decisions that we're making and meetings that we have. We can align with the direction they're going in.
I don't want to speak on behalf of the, the balance of the board, but what I would advocate to do is, after this meeting on the twentieth. Um, our, our next meeting on the twenty eighth, I think that we should answer all those questions.
Yeah.
Um, just, I, I don't have a good feel for the lay of the land, but I think we will after this, and I, I think. You're likely right, Bill, I, I think it's probably wise for us to think about keeping a close tabs on this, especially if they're going to start. Um. Potentially making some changes to the underlying zoning. Um, and I know we had the conversation where I had the, the back and forth, the, uh, Mr. Lieber, uh. The other, our last meeting, but, um, I, I think it'd be good for us to make sure that they're, they're either. Um, staying in their lane, or, or if there are material changes that are zoning, that we're apprised of it, and we have the ability to. Um, comment in a manner that would be consistent with our role of the planning board.
And it, it, as long as we get item one, uh, nailed down, which is, uh. All materials must be digital, I'm happy with that, so.
I agree.
That's strong, strong agree.
Yeah.
Um, anything else as it relates to the bylaw review committee that we want to talk about as a group?
Um, I'm looking at their meeting list, just to see. It looks like, oh, no, it, it's not their full meeting list, so it just goes up to their, right now, they have planned until. The next meeting on Monday, the twentieth, so. Um, they've met, they've been meeting since January fourteenth of twenty nineteen. I'm looking back on their minutes. And it looks like from twenty nineteen, then they jumped from twen- from April of twenty nineteen. Skipped ahead and reconvened, um, June of twenty twenty-two. And they've met one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, Monday will be their fourteenth meeting.
Yeah, they've, they've done a lot, but this is the first time that they've taken up the actual zoning portion of, of it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe that they were working on, uh, recodifying certain states of the general bylaws, and now. They, after they reconvened, they specifically decided to tackle the issue of zoning, and that's why they went through the process of engaging. That third party, uh. Attorney, zoning attorney, in order to bring in some expertise to, you know, on that specific component of the bylaw.
And, and the last recodifying they did was, was. Basically wording, uh, there weren't many wholesale changes, which is why I was a little. I think like Jim, a little surprised that they're. Planning on sort of reworking everything with, with zoning, so. That, that, you know, that's a huge process that. I don't know if a bylaw review committee should be the ones doing that truthfully, and I think that's where Jim's kind of lead also.
Yeah, I mean, the comment that the ZBBA shouldn't be a tool to utilize, and there shouldn't be variances. Just set off a whole series of red flags in my mind, because. Again. Whether or not people agree with those statements, that's a major public policy decision. That I don't think is the purview of a bylaw review committee, and would be something that us, in conjunction, I would argue with the ZBAA. And other potentially elected leaders should be making, um, because that would require a wholesale fundamental re. Review of how we manage development processes within the town, and so that's, that's really. You know, when I hear those words kind of being said, that's why I think we nev- definitely need to make sure we keep an eye on that process, to make sure that. That if there are changes that are being made to the, to the zoning that we're, you know, in, entrusted in managing, uh, in conjunction with the ZBAA that we're apprised.
Yeah. Agreed, that's, that's well said.
Um, so anything else as it relates to the bylaw review committee before I, before I close this item and move on?
Yep.
Okay, so in that case, uh, items not anticipated by the chair, um, before I open it up to everyone else, um, I did want to note that we did get a couple. Uh. Letters from the ZBAA requesting our input, and with some requests for input by. March twenty-second, which was before our next meeting, um, so I think specifically, there were. Uh, ones related to the vocational high school and a development on Autobahn Road, were the two. Uh, larger ones, as far as I could tell. Um, so I want to open it up and, uh, give any of the other member of the planning board the opportunity, does any comments on any of the specific. Um, request for comment from the planning board that people wanted to bring up at this time?
Hey Jim, I do have some notes and more, it's just to become familiar, especially with, um. The vocational high school, um, on Hemlock Road, so there's. I think as our board, um, reviews and. Understands more of what is happening up there, I don't know, um. I, I'm planning to attend the ZBAA meetings as a resident to find out more. Um, currently, if you're all familiar with where the school's going, um. If you are not, it, it's, it's worth looking a little deeper into it. Um, the amount of blasting and everything that's going on out there, and the amount of debris and everything that's going to be coming out of there for construction and how that's going to work. Um. I just want to make sure, um, the neighborhood, which, I mean, there isn't a big neighborhood, it's Farm Street. If they're coming out from the power lines where the new road is going to assess and all that, I, I think we'll just have more of this. Um. I, I don't have any comments on the current one that was presented, because it doesn't really get into anything that we are, it's more about wetlands. I didn't know, Matt, if you saw anything in there that. You would like to comment on, but I'm waiting for more specific. Like timelines and construction and debris, and how they're working with the roads and what entrances they're using, and when the blasting is going to happen, and all that.
Now, uh, the biggest thing I saw is also trucking routes, um, how to get to, uh. Where it's going to be going, and, you know, which way it's going to go, unfortunately, it's going to have to go through someone's neighborhood. Um, it's not, it's not going to go up Montrose. So if it doesn't go up Montrose, it's, it's going to cut to town center up to one twenty-eight, so. I can only imagine everything is going somewhere north of here, usually doesn't go towards Boston, so. Um, that's something to watch, what's going to happen with this materials, correct?
So when I read the, the material, and, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but to me, it looked like the, the nature of the request for. For our comment was related to the denial of the building permit by the town. Building engineer or town building inspector, on the basis that the, the project did not conform with specific. Zoning and bylaws, but there was a legal argument that was being played out in these letters related to. I believe it's called the Dover Amendment in Master and Our Law forty A. Uh, and I, I have to admit, uh, you know, reading this, I didn't necessarily see anything for us to comment on, because. I, I'm not a zoning lawyer, and I don't know about Dover Amendment and such, um, but if our, but if our. Underlying zoning is not applicable because of this amendment, I, I'm more than comfortable than leaving that to the ZBAA to suss out, I don't know if other. Members of the planning board are, have the same read or in agreement with that line of thinking and statements.
Well, it was new to me, uh, I looked it up to learn more about the Dover Amendment, and I can't see how we have any jurisdiction to comment on it, but.
Yeah, I, I don't think we have a lot of, of. Basis for comment on that, but we do on the process of actually. You know, how this is going to work, how this is going to play out, so.
Yep.
Um, I, I do think we have. You know, a little responsibility to make sure that, uh, Wakefield doesn't bear too much of the. The brunt during construction on this also. Well, I mean, we're, we're hosting the school, we're, we're. We're losing a, a part of, you know, our community. To expand this, we also shouldn't suffer, you know, all of the, uh, costs during construction also.
So, uh, so with all, one, I want to open opportunity. Megan or Theo, do you have any feedback or comment as it relates to the, to the vocational high school and this? Uh, request for comment from the ZBAA in front of us at this time?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with, uh, all the comments about the Dover Amendment, and. Um, and Matt, I think that's a, a really good point, that, um, really being mindful of. The actual development and what happens, and, and where, where all the downstream costs. Uh, hit, so, thank you.
So with that being said, uh, Matt and or Bill, um, since you guys were the ones who were raising up the comments, are there any? Anything specifically that you want us to, to take as a position and state in a letter to the ZBAA at this time?
No, nothing that I want to put in a letter, but I, I think we should just be vigilant and. Perhaps as townsfolk, make sure that this is addressed, that's all.
Yeah, I, same as Matt, I don't have anything at this point, but I imagine we're going to be receiving some other packages in the future that. I'm sure we will have comment on, um. As a resident of Wakefield, this project really pisses me off beyond belief. To where the location of it is and how it's being worked out, and I've been pretty active in the background with some of the other groups of. And trying to push it. In another direction.
Okay, does anyone else have any other comments on this at this time? Okay, hearing none, um, we'll move on to the, to the next one, uh, I, is any of the other requests for comment from the ZBAA that anyone else wanted to? Bring up or mention?
I have a quick comment, I'm, I'm excited about two of them, the Albion Flower Inc. Um, at one seventeen Albion Street about, but I, I can't wait to learn more about the iFly out on Autobahn Road. Like, when do we get to go?
Yeah, just to give you guys a backstory on that, if you don't mind me, before we, uh, dive into the plan, so I've been talking to them, Steve as well. Probably for over a year now, um, just about their interest, how they kind of chose Wakefield, um. In that, in that spot there, and it's been really positive conversations, I know if you've driven by that spot currently, it just houses a bunch of. Um, kind of storage containers and things like that, um, definitely not being utilized. Um, by the Sheridan at the current time, I don't foresee it ever being really utilized by the Sheridan. Um, so I, I think it's a real, from an economic development standpoint, um, a real great destination. Um, if I have to wear my economic development hat right now to get new people, I know it's right on the Lynnfield line, um. But they've been so far, um, really willing to work with the community to make sure that it's a good project, so. Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that I've had conversations with them.
Yeah, and I don't have any comments that the planning board, um, moving forward, but do we know when this is going in front of the Conservation Commission because of the watershed?
So they've met with the Conservation Commission, uh, I'm sorry, Conservation Department already, and kind of walked through with, um. With Rebecca, and she's kind of voiced there where she sees that there might be some issues. Um, I know that they're going to address some of the runoffs, and yeah, with, um, with the, uh, the, um. Not stream, uh, the river that runs.
August River, yep.
Yeah, um, so she, they have worked with her, and, and again, she's provided them feedback prior to them going to conservation. Um, I don't know exactly when they plan on doing that, um, but I can find out for you guys.
Yeah, it'd be good if you could share that, um, I'd be interested in. Just attending that meeting to learn more, um, I'm always interested when it's this close to. Uh, watershed and, and wetlands and everything, how they.
Yeah.
Work with the drainage, and if they're going to do any other type of, um, more environmental. Uh, permeable materials, however, they're going to work with the runoff and the.
And from our initial conversations, it sounds like they were going to be, um, doing that, and. The situation that they're putting forward seems better than the current situation, um, but I will find out more information.
Thanks.
And I'm, I'm just glad that, that this project, uh, is going forward as opposed to the last proposed. Novelty thing they wanted to put there, which would have been a disaster, but, uh, I'm glad this is something that's going to employ some people and. Actually be useful.
Thank you for our commercial.
Yep. Thanks, Aaron.
Uh, okay, uh, Theo or Megan, do you guys have any input, input as it relates to the, the iFly? Development on Autobahn Road you want to bring up at this time? Okay, uh, so in that case, uh, those are all the items I had for not anticipated by the chair by myself, so. Want to open it up to other members, uh, Bill, do you have any items not anticipated?
Um, thanks, and I actually do, um, as usual, I tuned into the town council meeting, um, and they, one. Point of order came up that, or one presentation came up that. I think we should be interested in as a board, the housing production, the housing production, sorry, it's getting like, housing production strategies. There was a slideshow that was being presented, and it came up that the town council and the planning board, um. Well, the town council to work with the planning board to make suitable public property available for affordable housing and conduct feasibility study. A feasibility study analysis of town-owned parcels that may be suitable. For some amount of affordable housing, so this was from the housing, um, plan. So it's, Aaron, you might want to add in a little bit more if you know more, but I just wanted our, us to be prepared for it in case it just gets dropped on us. With a short deadline, and Aaron, do you know when this might be happening, or?
I'm sorry, can you, uh, what might be happening, the Affordable Housing, uh, Trust?
Yeah, it was, if you, I brought up that video earlier today to just read it again to make sure I understood, and it's at the. Two fifteen, two hour fifteen minute mark of the video, and it's housing production strategies. And the two bullet points, pursue opportunities for mixed use and transit center development with planning board.
Mm-hmm.
Which we know about, and that was the twenty fifteen, um, work with. Town council and planning board to make suitable public property available. For affordable housing and conduct feasibility study analysis of town-owned parcels. That may be suitable for some amount of affordable housing, and if I remember correctly from the video, they specifically mentioned Butler Ave.
Hmm.
As one of, of those places, so.
Yeah, no, I have nothing had come forward to my desk on when this may fall on you guys, um.
Mm-hmm.
But I think it's a really positive, positive thing, um.
Agreed, it's exciting, I just don't want it to be dumped on us, like, okay, we want to do this in the next two weeks.
Yeah, no, I definitely will give you guys a head, heads up, um, if I hear anything, um. And I'm sure we'll get more leeway time than two weeks, uh, hopefully to make sure, um. You know, we do it the right way, so I'll definitely, um, you know, keep that in mind, um, oh, here we go. Page thirty-one of the, um, the packet here, um. I'll definitely keep you guys in the loop on that.
And the sec- second thing is town council voted last night to appropriate, um, a hundred thou- a hundred thousand dollars. Up to a hundred thousand dollars, um, for a new position, and Aaron, I don't know if you want to expand on that a little bit more, or?
Sure, so, uh, last night I did tune into this part, and then I had to, unfortunately, I missed the Affordable Housing, so I have to go back and listen, but, um. They did vote last night, and Danny He did put forward, and I think we talked about this last time, um, Director of Strategic Growth. Position, so, um, I know that's really been something that she's been pushing for over a year now, um. Having more of a, a planning role in our department, um, I know Steve gave an overview of all the work that. Um, you know, myself, Bill Renaud, uh, working with, uh, Steve as well, and, and, uh, Jen has been very helpful with the master plan of. Uh, working with, uh, Steve as well and, and Jen has been very helpful with the master plan of. Still the, all the planning work that is still going on in town and being covered by, um. Many of us, I think the missing gaps that kind of put some bullet points together, um, for Steve and it was discussed last night is. The day to day, um, administrative planning type stuff. Um, I think her role is more looking at our master plan, um. Possibly a new housing production plan after we kind of wrap up the, the master plan. Um, and being that really go to person for planning efforts, um, in town to hopefully. Uh, free up more economic development, uh, time for myself. You know, I think it's great. Um, I think it. Sometimes we all have to be reminded that a number of these developments that we are seeing have, were part of a, from a town planner. Back in two thousand fifteen with the multifamily mixed use. And so these, uh, are all happening at once, but it was part of the plan. And I think sometimes people, um, kind of forget about that. So this role, yeah, again, would be really looking at these more longer term, short term planning. Plans and, um, helping to implement them. And I would hope to be working really closely with them as well. Um, just because I, I have been working really closely on a number of these projects and. I do have a passion in, um, continuing to see a lot of these move forward since I've had my hands in a lot of them, um. But yeah, uh, it was an interesting conversation. It passed five to one, um, so there will be a new role, um. If I understand correctly, you know, the budget still has to be passed to town meeting. And so, um, you know, that position wouldn't really start until. I, I, I don't know, but I'm assuming summer or fall. But yeah, I, I love any feedback that you guys have, um, on that. I just see whoever this is. He or she, uh, us working, uh, really closely together. And it's not like I want to hold on to these projects. Um, but I just feel like I've seen them through and I'd love to continue to see a lot of them through as well.
Well, thanks, Aaron. And my point of bringing it up tonight too was I think our board should. Come up with. What we need from a person that could be supporting Erin as well as us, the Z B A and other boards and committees. That take care of any type of planning and, and development. Um, my hope is that as a board, we could. Pretty much outline what this position needs to be for us. Uh, this is a chance. I think if we let it go and don't. Ask. Then we're just going to have to. Work with whatever is, whoever is. Selected for this position. So I, I don't think we need to do it tonight, but it would be great, um, after town meeting. If it's possible to get together and really figure out. What do we want this to be? And we could work with Erin and Steve to really push what we want as a board. For this position and then Matt and I have worked closely with the former town planner. And it was pretty amazing to learn so much. From someone with that much experience, but honestly, I don't feel this position needs to have all that experience because we do have Erin and we do have Bill Renaud and we have. It's just a different town hall than it was five or six years ago. And I think, um, we could build on that and really. Matt, we could start with everything electronic. But seriously, it's, it's like, how do we? Build this position for what we need it for and, and maybe we also combine our efforts, efforts and talk to the Z B A and see what they need as well.
I mean, I think I, the one thing I will note, I think it was brought up to the coordination between Z B A, planning board and CONCOM and. I don't know prior to me starting and even within the last. Prior to the last year, we weren't really meeting together and Theo, I won't speak for you, but I find those meetings that we've been having quarterly really helpful. And I think something that we should continue to move forward and I feel like this is something that that person could share. And again, streamline a lot of these processes that, that go through a number of these boards and how we can better work together. I think would be super helpful and it was also brought up last night, the whole M B T A communities, right? I mean, that is a big. You know, planning, zoning overhaul for our community and Jim knows it's taking up a lot of time and we didn't predict this as well. So. And housing in general, right? Um, you know, I have to submit plans to the, the state. Quite a bit about, you know, the number of affordable housing that we've, um, created with these new developments, which is all really great stuff. But it's very tedious. And I don't, I like doing it, but it's a lot of that type of stuff where I feel like that would be the strongest benefit. And then these longer term plans working together because I do see a lot of overlap with the planning and economic development. Because you know, without housing, there isn't much economic development and without economic development, we won't see housing. So. Yeah. That's kind of my two cents. Um, I feel like more comfortable to talk about it now, um. If I had to put. And how I was feeling.
Well, I, I think I can speak for everyone on, on the planning board and say, you know, Aaron, we, we've been. Exceptionally lucky to have someone like you supporting us and we're. We're looking forward to having. Uh, having you be, be, you know, work with whoever is appointed or. Hired rather, uh, in whatever role. And I think Bill's right. I think that we should probably be. Thoughtful in terms of providing our input on how, how best if we're having additional resources. To utilize yourself and the additional resource. And I think you're right, a hundred percent Eric. Some of those long-term. Planning efforts that. You know, I think all of us are concentrated on maybe the here and now. But being able to have that ability, have the space and the time to take a step back and think about things in a thoughtful manner and then engage with. The planning board and, and then the public. Probably where I would advocate that we would think about it. Um, you know, like you said, the M B T A communities is taking a lot of time, but I definitely think that. Not talking to other members of the board, but I, I envision at some point we probably want to have, you know, an overall think. Uh, rethink of some of the things like our maps. To make it so, you know, like the divisions don't run through parcels left and right willy nilly. You know, some of those types of things are kind of our team cleanup, but I some, there's something that I think. Almost like what the bylaw review committee is doing, but by us and we can make some of those kind of updates and choices. It would be an appropriate role for us to take on, maybe after the M B T A community. And after we get this new staff member onboarded in a way such that. We, um, we can set them up for success and have Aaron continue to work on some of the current efforts. That would be my feedback initially without having that resource identified, but. I think, Bill, you're right. When that, the resources identified, we should probably be thoughtful in terms of our, how we. Provide input to make sure it shapes it in a way such that it's. Supporting all, all the members here, uh, the most economically.
And I know they have Gail, but maybe the Z B A could use some, you know, more, um, technical type support too that this person could offer. Um, Gail does a wonderful job, but you know, being part of these planning meetings that I sit on with a number of other communities. Um, you know, applying for grants, regional type grants, um, that those supports the planning board and then the B B A in the town in general. You know, and CONCOM as well, so.
Okay, um. Anything else on town planner that anyone wants to bring up Theo, Megan, Matt?
Um, when do we want that to be a discussion item? Uh, for a future agenda is that?
I'd advocate, we, we talk, think about it after the position's funding is approved. I don't know. I mean, I, I don't want to speak for, that was what I advocate for. I don't know if Bill, Matt or Megan feel differently.
I think so. I know during, um. Uh, previously for Aaron's position, when two members of town council put together. The, um, description for the job tasks, um. Councillor Santos and Dinaco, um, presented that. At town meeting. So maybe we should be more proactive. And get together with Aaron and Steve just to see. Like what is that going to shape? Um, will councillor Dennehy? And councillor Vincent be the ones who? Um, push this forward with what? The. Qualifications are for the job and tasks. I don't know.
It should be obviously sometime before the job description is written and, and before it's posted. Because. I know for Aaron's position, I, I don't know if a lot of the job tasks were in it when they posted your. The actual position it. Uh, you actually got those after you. Received the job, so. We should have some input. So when they advertise for this, they know exactly what they're getting into.
Well, um. Uh, so I'm happy to reach out to David Hatfield and, and folks on the CONCOM and start to have some. Uh, some of those, uh, introductory conversations and I can bring them back to the group.
I think that's a great idea, Theo. Uh, only they might not even be aware of. This, where it was just last night.
And I think we're due Theo to meet in the next month or two, um, so that might be a good meeting where we kind of. You know, go through that and this position too could help strength, you know, getting all our stuff online and, and making sure we have the right programming for all that and things like that. So.
Okay, so it sounds like we're in consensus that Aaron and Theo are going to pick this one up. Talk to Z B A and CONCOM. And then maybe we'll pick it up as a board at a later date as we get closer to the, to it being posted.
Awesome.
Okay, um. Anything else, planning? Town planner, uh, position that anyone wants to bring up, uh, Megan or Matt? I think you both, another one of you. Chimed in on that one. Okay. Bill, any other items not anticipated? Okay, uh, Megan, any items not anticipated from your perspective? Nope, uh, Matt? And Theo?
So, uh, the only thing is that the, the last master plan survey closes on March twentieth. So, uh. If you haven't, um, please do it. Maya, nag your parents. The, uh, yeah, yeah, so. That'll be helpful. So. And at some point, um. I'll come back to the group with information from the open space. Planning group, working group.
And Theo, can you remind me, um? What is the timeframe for the master plan to be published, that report?
It, um. Aaron, um. They're basically going to take the rest of. This year and then.
No, I think they're hoping to have it, um, I had to do an extension. July. Would that be, I, to be completely transparent, I think that'd be really wishful thinking, um, but. As of right now, it's July.
So maybe, maybe this ends up being a good timeframe. The master plan. Comes online in July, August, if you get pushes or even September. Thank Aaron, when we talked earlier, this bat, this town planner positions probably wouldn't get filled until September by the earliest.
Uh, I would imagine probably.
So maybe that, maybe that's actually kind of a nice set of timeline. We have a master plan that just gets published. We might have a town planner come on around that point. Hopefully the working group for the M B T A communities has. Got some. Baseline at that point or are pretty close. So we kind of might all work out that the, the latter half of this year, we've got a lot of, a lot of, um. Good developments in terms of long-term planning. That we can, we can really sink our teeth into. So that's, that's a good thing to, to hear. Okay, uh, so I believe that's all everyone's gonna, uh, bite at the apple for items anticipated. Anything else anyone wants to bring up before we move on to item number seven? In that case, do, uh, do I hear?
Motion to adjourn?
During, there you go. Bill Spalding.
I'll second.
Second by Theo. So, uh, motion to adjourn, uh, Matt Lowry?
Yes.
Megan Minasali?
Yes.
Theo, no?
Yes.
Bill Spalding?
Yes.
And myself is yes, passes five to zero. Thank you all for the time and, uh, thank you for all these positive developments here. Thank you, Maya. Thank you, Aaron, and thank you, Susan.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks.
Thanks for, thanks for doing it, Jim. Well led.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Bye.